All right, I hereby start this regular meeting of the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board. Today's October 12th. The time is 3:08 PM. I'll be chairing this meeting as Jenny is not able to attend. On the the primary focus of this meeting today is rather straightforward, although it is really important. It is to complete the prioritized list of expenditures approved that for review for the county commission budget process. We'll get to that in just a minute. Before we do have love, we'll get the presentations in a second and love will share kind of a brief status report as to where the advertising efforts for this fall are. Where we are, what was between us and getting creative actually bought and placed in market. But before we get there, are there any conflicts of interest disclosures or ex parte communication? That any members would like to share. Hearing none, are there any citizens to be heard?
None here.
Seeing none, hearing none. Let's briefly do introductions. We do have a new board member. Brian Hunnings is joining us for the first time as a member of the Travel Council Advisory Board. Representing Red Cliffs Lodge. So for Brian and any newcomers benefits, could we just quickly do a round of introductions inside the chambers first, then we'll go online. And Ben, do you want to start and then you know clockwise in the room?
I am a banter economic development specialist with Grand County. Jason Taylor, board member.
Your clockwise or the other clockwise?
We started, there's no turning back.
Ben, you sent seven for Lacy Shumway with Chamber.
You can met Snare Mark to my name is really film commission.
Alex Porzewski, board member.
Sharon Kinsley, board member.
Robert Rivera, assistant marketing director for the travel council. And
Awesome. Is that everybody in the room?
I see. Yes, yes.
I'm August Grant, economic development director. I'll go to, I guess I introduced Brian already. So Brian, unless there's anything else you have to say, we can just keep on trucking.
No, excited to be a part of this. Thanks, everybody.
Awesome. Caitlin?
Caitlin Jones, Moab City County Liaison.
Awesome. Melissa? You are muted.
Sorry, sorry. Marketing Director, Grand County Economic Development.
Awesome. And then Mark.
Yeah, hi, Mark Stephen at with Love Communications, VP and Group Account Director here, working on your three campaigns.
With that in mind, we'll go to presentations, if any, and there is indeed a brief presentation, Mark, if you can just give us an up to date. Bring us up to speed on where you're at with the love creative process. And then I'll just have Melissa speak a little bit to where she is, what she's been up to. Just so you can provide, get some insight into some of our internal operations. So Mark, I'll turn it over to you. Do you need a screen share?
No, I don't need anything for today. I just wanted to walk through if that's okay. So I'm happy to provide anything as a follow up if anyone needs anything. So first of all, this has been a really from from our point of view, a really slick process. I really appreciate everyone's collaboration and 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 time and availability as we got all the ads approved relatively quickly and 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 got your feedback and was it were able to implement that feedback. So everything is set in stone to to launch your three campaigns. The first campaign will be the Fall Drive Campaign. And so that's focusing on, as we, as you know, just the Salt Lake City DMA, but also, you know, from heavy up in Wasatch, Wasatch Front to Salt Lake, Atwell, Utah Counties and so forth. And really just, and that's Utah, but also Denver, Colorado Springs, Vegas, Boise, Idaho Falls and Phoenix, those drive markets. And so our goal is to launch and we are on track to launch on October 17th. This Monday, we'll launch with broadcast TV and cable as well as, and then we've got transit advertising. And then following, we've got digital, digital billboards, we've got prints, paid social as well as Expedia and programmatic display. So all of that creative has been approved and it's just in final, final kind of fine tuning right now. The last for approval is the broadcast TV spots that we set along for final review and approval, and then we'll get those ready to go for for Monday. And then following up with the drive campaign, just one week later, we launched on the 24th with both the the fly campaign and the and the Canada campaign. So the fly campaign is focusing on, you know, Denver, Los Angeles, Salt Lake, Chicago, and then of course nationally with the paid search in Google as well. But we've got everything locked and loaded to start that on the 24th. And then likewise with the the Canada campaign, starting that as well on the 24th, and that's specifically focusing on TripAdvisor. So with all those three campaigns, all the creative, we're just making some fine tunings to each of everything and then getting everything locked and loaded. So we're in really good shape. Let me know if I went past that through.
Oh, that's great.
They think so. Yeah.
So any, any questions from folks on on where we're at in process for for that?
Your question? No, be good. Be good.
I had asked if all of you had seen the stuff that was going out, just with that.
Yeah, we and we saw, we saw some of the ads, some of the a lot of material, but I think we didn't see the final approval.
We did, we did a workshop, but it wasn't the finest.
Right. Yeah. Yep. So, so we have we've been workshopping it and I'll all send out, I'll have Mark and Adelaide and the love team. We'll make sure that everybody sees where everything is. Nothing has been placed yet. So I think basically everything that has already been seen by everybody is where we're, is where we're, we're headed on this, but we'll make sure that we continue to be transparent with the creative before stuff gets placed. So there's an opportunity for input along the way.
I mean, I can show there's things that have been trafficked already. I can share that with you now on my screen if you'd like, or I can send an email to you. August.
I'm just a total creative visual person and was just a random question. I was like, you know, that's where I come from is before you send out a blast like as everybody's seen it, sorry.
Why? We had sent out updates and so I, yeah, if you haven't seen the creative, then we'll make sure that we send that along, but my understanding, everyone had seen it. So.
I think rather than pulling it up now, we do have a pretty substantive discussion for the day. I'd rather just make sure we send it out and every have everybody have a check sec. Have an opportunity to look and discuss outside of the outside of the meeting.
Okay, I'll send it to August. I'll send it to you shortly and you can send it on to the teams. That sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks so much, everybody. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Melissa really quickly. Melissa, can you share where you're at and kind of the context for your mission?
I mean, Europe, actually, is my first time in Europe and actually is my first time to do a Europe sales mission. So two days ago, I was in the land, talking with all the agencies, the travel agencies that they do B to B and B to C, their focus on luxury clients. This was really tough for me. I usually, when I went to Canada, it wasn't not too complicated, but these people are very, very high end. They have a lot of question. One of my two meetings, it was like a classroom. It was like 20 people that need a presentation in front of everybody. I can't believe how the European love the West of USA, they usually promote New York, California, and then Utah. I have a lot of picture when I go to the office, they have a wall of Arches National Park, any red rocks, they got in love with you that and you guys can see, I can show one of the, they create a magazine. And they have Canyonlands, and then another magazine that they have Monument Valley. So it's a, it's an interesting market. I say they got in love with us. They don't care about the price. They just care about the activities, the outdoor. They are wealthy. They are super educated and that transportation is incredible here. Everybody has bikings. I can't believe. I mean, I don't know how to walk here. I mean, they, they don't respect that. I mean, you need to respect the bike. But it's a beautiful place. I'm already talking with almost more than 16 agency. And since Jason is over there, you're popular Jasons. I know what I like. His name is Peter Ben for Travel Trend and he loves more adventures and what he told me today. He was so happy with your service and your product. And he wants to still working with you. And yeah, and tomorrow I'm gonna stay until well, Sunday here in Amsterdam, I have a lot of meetings. I don't stop even my lunch is a lunch meeting. So the only time I have like a break is my dinner time and then come back to bed for the next day. But it's working hard and try to promote more and sustain our way.
Awesome. Thanks, Melissa. It is 11:20 your time, so you are forgiven to bow out and go to bed at any time. So just generally, you know, in context, this is the, these kinds of international sales missions. It's organized by the State Office of Tourism and that State Office of Tourism has a contracted rep agency in their target international markets. So in this case, Olivier, who represents France and the Benelux countries has organized the sales mission in order to go and visit with all of the travel agencies out in that market and provide education. And kind of fodder for then Olivier, the rep to do all kinds of promotions with that particular market to drive the message that we want to drive to that particular audience.
Forget, can I get something else?
Go for it.
We are gonna need your help. An agency hitting Amsterdam, they are doing like a kind of like a Syria about each country with Down Syndrome kids and they want to come to Moa and do like a kind like a Syria about Moa with the Down Syndrome kids. Doing some activities could be rafting, hiking, and they want to get in touch with you.
Awesome. Okay, thanks so much, Melissa. Well, we'll move on here unless anybody has any questions for Melissa.
Keep up the good work.
Awesome. Seeing none, a couple of high level things that I want to share is that timed entry reservation stuff this month is full of kind of evaluation of the pilot as well as meetings that are either organized in joint combination with Flipco, which is the Utah kind of public lands office. Or I should say the policy, the policy arm for for Utah's state public land strategy. Working with UTIA and the Utah Office of Tourism and NPS to gather feedback from businesses from the public. And try to, you know, basically be a part of the conversation. As they go back within the NPS system and make decisions on what does next year look like in the year after that. So keep your, keep up, keep eyes out for meetings and opportunity to to provide feedback and get more information on that subject. And I guess lastly, I think, I think that's, that was just the main thing I wanted to mention, I suppose. Was there any questions on that?
No.
Do you remember the date of that?
There's a, there's a handful of meetings the last week of October. There's going to be another kind of engagement opportunity for businesses on the afternoon of Thursday, the 27th. And then there's kind of a general meeting. I don't know if we've set up a public meeting yet, but I'll definitely get get back to y'all for, to be able to share that. With that in mind, I'm going to hop right in if that sounds good for people. On the discussion and action items, the first agenda item is approval of minutes from June 14th, August 4th and August 30th meetings. The meeting minutes are attached to the calendar invite and emailed in your inboxes. I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion to, can we do them all together?
Sure.
No changes. I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 14th, August 4th and August 30th, travel count area travel council meetings.
Thank you, Sharon. Do we have a second? Any, any discussion, any, any adjustments that need to be made before we vote on this motion? Seeing none, I'd call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please make yourself clear. Okay, pass unanimously. On, on to agenda, the second agenda item discussion, finalization and approval of list of prioritized 2023 TRT and TRCCA expenditures. Let me bring up the right document. So for context, we worked on this at the last meeting and we have kind of a nice laundry list going. So I think the purpose of today is to prioritize that list. And then also to incorporate the information that the Economic Development Board, they created a version of this that focuses on the economic diversification activity. And so we want to incorporate that into the travel councils list as well. But I'm going to start with the travel council piece, the tourism piece. Again, I'll just really quickly share my screen and go over what we have so far and then we can start to discuss. Everybody can see the document pretty well.
Yeah, August, you're, you're, you've got the split screen on your end going, right? We've got like one window on the left, on the right. If you're able to drag out the window, we're looking at a little bit, it would make it a little wider on our end.
How's that?
That's a little better. Yeah, yeah. Are you all able to see and read that?
This is all, well, I love, I love to see preparation. Okay, so I'll read through this for the sake of making sure everybody's on the same page. So Grand County McCommission on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board met at a regular meeting to work on the list of budget priorities for expenditure in accordance with transit room tax and tourism recreation cultural convention and airports facilities tax. On Tuesday, October 11th, well, it is officially Wednesday. 2022, the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board advised and approved the amended list of budget priorities as presented below. Below is the body's finalized list of expenditure priorities. Items are ranked from greatest to least important. So an item determined to be most important in the category will be listed first, whereas a lower priority funding item would be listed second. And we'll fill this in with voting numbers and attendance after the fact. Total projected TRT collections for 2023 number in $8,1,541 on mitigation expenditures, which is projected at a little over 5 million, representing 63% of total TRT collections. We talked about this last year. And at the last meeting, the body resolved to make no recommendations for change and steadily these funding priorities as they are already allocated. Do we still feel good about that collectively?
Yes.
And, and Brian, as we've kind of started this process, there's no dumb questions. So feel, please, please pop in at any point if you feel like you have a question about the process. Okay, so we're going to leave that how it is.
I was going to ask if they, you know, everyone knew what, where the mitigation money went. Anything that is directly, they have to act through that they're directly impacted by the answers. Their jobs grows exponentially.
Thanks. Thanks for that info, Mary. Does it exactly to everybody? Does anybody have any remaining questions about the mitigation fund? Okay, on established to promote expenditures, just projected at a little under $3 million or 37% of total TRT collections. I'll come back to this. I'm going to bring over the letter from EDAB. So I'm just going to skip over this for now, but just keep in mind that that is a mil, about a million dollars for economic diversification or one third of the 37%. Just so that's clear. And for recreation, film production and conventions expenditures, which projected a little under $600,000 or one fifth of that, that 37% of above, what we had written down from the last conversation was in order of priority, the community event grant, film in general. So, you know, we hadn't talked exactly about what that looks like. Responsible Recreation Program, the Trail Ambassadors, et cetera. And then the Moab Art Trails Program. Last year, it funded supported match funds for the recreation hotspot transportation funding, funding to the monument value film commission, the responsible recreation program. This line became kind of the community event grant. And this is focused on kind of research and data oriented topics. Do people want to discuss this now or wait until we look at the tourism expenditure list?
I just have a question on the Moab Arts Trails. Are those like? What are, what is the Moab Art Trails?
So the sculptures you've seen around town, they cycle about every six months.
Wouldn't that be considered city?
Or well, I mean, there's a lot that we do that that is within the city jurisdiction.
Because is the mark under the city or is it under the county city?
So Moab Art Trails isn't run by the mark. It's an independent organization. But I think we, we're not the only funder of that program. I believe that we provide typically 10 grand a year to support those new sculptures. And it's in the recreation fund as it's, you know, it's kind of this like walking tour of the downtown. You go to the art trails.
Do really like them. So.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not saying that. I was just curious on, on to how they.
Yeah.
There's just in town that doesn't go out into the county.
County, city, I didn't think of state, right?
Yeah, I
I do think they get grass.
I'm just glad they moved the one that looked like a person by the mech coming out of the parking lot. They moved that because every time I thought I was going to run over someone. Every time I glanced over, I thought someone was walking towards me. So I'm glad they moved that and now it looks like an egg. So it's really cool.
Yeah. So they, you know, when I got this position that had kind of been in the budget for every year since I showed up and, you know, they continue to make a budget request in the same amount. And it has been funded every year by the county commission. Do people want to talk about this section or do we want to maybe go over what's in the tourism expenditures category first and then look at them kind of holistically? That would be my recommendation.
There we go.
Okay, um, for the establish and promote tourism expenditures, which is projected at 1,381,599, which is calculated based off of that 37% number up here. Subtract the economic diversification and recreation film and conventions. Subcategories, which gives us that balance. So with that, with that amount of money, what we have written in here, and we have strategic planning, number one. We have a steady consensus based community and industry bought in marketing. We could rework that. Brand planning that would come out of strategic planning. So, you know, once we have kind of a new identity for our, our, our brand or for the community and how we're moving forward, making the visual language and the kind of written language work in parallel to that, which would then we'll have new skins and potentially new website development, do new travel guides, et cetera. There's a chance that this doesn't all, I'd say likely chance that we don't get to all of this next year. It's a lot of work. But that's kind of the direction we want to make sure that we have some funds for if we do get that far ahead. The Moab Stewart Program is what we had discussed. It's, it's tied to the Responsible Recreation Program and Trail Ambassador Program, but it's more focused on communication, web-based presences, really trying to communicate with visitors before they're here and kind of tied into our marketing strategies. So imagine new video content that that speaks to a visitor about the community and how they should visit it ethically. And going through kind of a program of education that we're bringing in our local business community, our, our locals, our guides and visitors kind of as a, as a wholesale project. Other things that are on here, this Moab Ambassador Program was brought up, kind of an idea. It's not so much the trail ambassador, but more just friendly faces that visitors are welcomed by. So whether that's like at the airport, you have someone who can kind of speak to the community and answer questions. Somewhat of the intention of just like providing a friendly face to welcoming people to town and that'd likely be volunteer kind of lead program, not a lot of meat on the bones of that idea at this point. But I thought it was notable and we kept it on here. We've got reporting and telling the TRT story. We've talked about this year after year, but how do we more effectively communicate to residents and others? You know, what, how does TRT and TRCCA work and where do they actually drive value in the community? Which I think helps, helps the, 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 the larger goal of a holistic economy, thinking about how are we, you know, making sure that the economy is driving value to the community. And I think what that comes in tandem with is kind of increasing our internal storytelling and communications capacity. So I've been talking a lot about having an additional team member or contracted entity that helps us wrangle all of the content creators, social media, podcasts, video storytelling, blog posts. So that we can really dominate, that's maybe the wrong word, that we can really have a really great owned media to continue on the strategic planning and what comes out of that in the brand planning piece. So, you know, basically think someone with media journalism type background, who's also doing some project management in-house. Increasing the data and research capacity. So that's the same idea, but on ensuring that our, our local community, it's access to transparent information, transparent and up to date information about the local economy, the state of things, are we reaching our goals or not? You know, we currently just don't have a really good capacity to live inside of the numbers that we have so much access to is that we can provide good insights to the community and inform our decisions. And then lastly, we have in here, the special event grant. So that's been successful. Year after year, we want to continue that program to promoting and supporting events. I try visitation during a strategically identified time of the year. And then the Moab Advertising Grants, we created this last year to drive opportunities for marketing to smaller organizations and businesses in town that you know, might not have access to, to marketing, to promote their particular business within, within the market. Specifically focusing on smaller mom and pop type operations. And then we've got in the in-town visitor education and marketing. So think the billboards that we have in town. Those kinds of things that are still communicating with guests and visitors, but not necessarily like more and more after they're here. I'm noticing that salaries and overhead for our office didn't make that list. I think that was just accident. So I'll try to pull that up. This is from last year, continued marketing program, development of a local business marketing program that became the Moab Grant. Event funding came to special event and the community grant and then data dashboard for economic data indicators is something we're still working on in our office. in our office. So, um, I, I'll just kind of open it up to maybe things that people would like to see on either of these lists that's missing. First of all, so any programs or support or anything that feels like we don't have currently covered.
August, I got a question for you. When you, when you're doing this list, did you guys create like a tentative budget? You know, kind of what you would allocate to each one of these line items on here, you know, like what, what are salaries going to be next year, you know, and what is? You know, to kind of look at it and go like, oh, we're going to have this and it's going to, we're going to be over this budget. Do we need to try to pull it from someplace else or something like that, you know, or do we know like where we're at with any of this?
Good question. So basically the, the process, how the process works is this will inform the creation of a draft budget, basically, which I will then present to the budget advisory board on the last Friday of this month in two and a half weeks. And it's during that process where it'll basically, I'll have to make these decisions. What, what are we able to fund, you know, and with, with, with Chris and the other folks in the county and with our team internally? Being guided by the outcome of this documents. And I think that's why the prioritization piece of this is really important. Because, you know, if we run out of money at letter G or whatever, then it, you know, it just, we won't be able to, to fund it. So I think that really trying to make sure that the prioritization is nailed is the most important part of this exercise. And then I think that if there's things that are less important, we either bring it down or pull it off the list because this informs, you know, what I'm going to end up putting in the budget. And then there will be a meeting between, that the county commission has to actually formally review this document during the budget process. And that'll be an opportunity to square what were, what was prioritized, but with, between what is in the draft, basically.
All right.
So you almost, I would say that like as a body, don't worry so much about quantity and more about priority, right? So like, we definitely want to see this. We definitely want to see this. And that's, I think, the really important part there.
Right. But I guess what I'm getting at is it's kind of, this, this whole document's a moot point. If, you know, it's just going through the motions of okaying this, you know, if, if we go, and we've, we've come through all these priorities that we want to do. And actually, you know, we think that we need to have, you know, 1.6 million to get through next year, you know, stuff. So you see what I'm saying? You know, so like, is there any way that we can pull from, you know, the economic diversification program? Or is this just a, this is what you guys get to spend? You guys are going to get 1.3, you know, spend however you want. It's not going to go up. It's not going to go down. That's just what you're going to get, you know? But if that's the case, that's fine. You know, I'm just kind of curious, you know? You know, it's like, as we go into next year and we say, hey, steady consensus-based community and industry bought in marketing, you know, what does love say that's going to be? Is that going to be 800,000 or, you know, or what? Earmark. So we need to earmark that for that thing, you know, and then kind of go from there and stuff. So that's kind of, you know?
Yeah.
But if it's just kind of this, this is what you get, make do with it, then we might as well just approve it and move on, you know, and stuff. And, and, you know, because to me it'd be like salaries are going to be A, right?
I was just going to say that we need to make sure salaries is number one.
Salaries.
Let's make, let's do that. Let's do that first really quickly.
Because we can't do anything without staff.
Yeah.
Now, I want to, I want to, I have a quick question. I want to make sure I understand the sequence. So after this meeting, you take the priorities that this group has come up with. You look at what you're going to, what, what your allotted money is, put the numbers by the priorities. And you take it to the budget advisory board the last Friday of this month, correct?
Correct. So.
This body, right? Doesn't it come back to this body to look at? And then they send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the county commission. Is that how it works?
The last piece, I'm not, I'm not sure there's a formal process where there's like a, we like this or we don't like this. My understanding is that what's in statute is that this list is, is the opportunity to get the say into the process and that the, the commission has to hold a open meeting in which they basically go over the draft budget and compare it to the letter and say justify the decisions, basically. Like, hey, this is how we came to this conclusion for this number. This is how this happened. This guy cut out for this reason. We appreciate the travel council board's input. And so we've made sure to accommodate those within the, within the bound, within the confines of the budget and the strategies that, that we're, that we're trying to move forward with. If that makes sense.
Right. Yeah. This is where the advisory, you know, quote unquote.
This is, this is the advice.
Yeah. This is the advice and the commission can either take that advice or not take the advice. We're just giving them.
That's how the process is designed. That's right. Although I think, I think in.
Travel council, because I know in the past I was, when I first got on, they got to see the numbers. They get to see the numbers. Even, you know, I think it might even be helpful for them to see the numbers before it goes to budget advisory. So, you know, in case any red flags show up for that.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want to find out that we're spending a million dollars on storytelling when we can't cover salaries for the tourism division.
Or, or either.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. What does promotion look like?
Totally. So, so I think that my, my take then would be that that open meeting is that opportunity to follow up. Here's what the budget actually looks like. Here's what the list is. Does that actually square with goals and expectations and that, that, that budget as being considered at that meeting? Is the opportunity to, to say, this is right, this is off. We would request that, you know, we, we like to see this change.
It's basically saying you get this money and we're saying, okay, we're going to get this money. Here's A through Z or whatever of what we
Yeah.
want to do with it and stuff.
Yeah.
Within no order of monetary amount to each one of those line items yet.
That's correct. That's, that's not, that's not the purpose of this particular part of the process.
Yes, yes, correct.
So we're just, we're just following state code, right? This is what, this is what this body is supposed to do according to statute.
We're checking the box.
We're, we're actively doing a good job to make sure that this piece of the process not only incorporates sound wisdom and advice from the, our, our partners in the private sector, but ensures that, you know, the decisions that we make are actually all in line is how I would, I would say. We're not just checking a box. Come on.
Now, salaries, salaries and overhead for the tourism division of economic development department.
Yep.
Those salaries are still split between the ED department and tourism, right? You guys allocated out like,
Yeah.
X, 40% of my time was this, you know, 60% was this, you know, right?
Yep.
How, how does that kind of come out at the end of the year? Is that, is, is that like a monthly thing or is that just kind of a?
It's basically a, a, we do like an annual percentage. So like for me, I'm more 50/50. Ben is more, you know, like 90/10. Robert and Melissa are way the other side. And so basically that salary from a reporting standpoint, at the end of the year, we just use a factor that estimates how much time we as staff spend annually on any particular, you know, state code allowable use.
Yeah, so probably doesn't, you don't see it full amount till the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And then the same would go for Bega, right? So Bega's, Bega's paid out of the film, the film, rec filming conventions piece. So her salary is, is pegged reporting wise to that line item or that allowable use in statute.
Where's like Maddie and her team paid out of?
So that part, I don't know how much, but part of that comes out of recreation film production and conventions. So the responsible recreation program, specifically Anna and everything that she does and their team gets funded, at least in part. I know they go after grants and other funding sources, but.
Should we put number one on that one also as salaries and?
Let's do that. All right. What else? Um, what other, I'm just going to keep popcorning our way, way through this.
I just, I'm just curious if anyone else feels like the in-town visitor education marketing should be up higher on the list instead of the bottom of the list with everything coming through with all the OHV stuff, the, you know, the new education things for people to get OHV permits, that kind of stuff. And I, I'm thinking we might need some more even on, on the sidewalk corner signs, putting in more new information in there. Getting information out to the hotels, motels.
It almost seems like you could combine in-town visitor education, marketing, Moab Stewart and Moab Ambassador programs into one, into one thing, couldn't you?
Yeah, I think, and I think that ends up. Yeah, I think there ends up being, you know, in terms of deliberating between our two departments and where the funding and it ends up getting paid for. You know, we kind of have to, I mean, I think it would be, it would be useful to get input on that. I mean, I think that the thought is that the stuff that is more, you know, labor at a trailhead, that's clearly coming out of, out of their budget, but the more advertising piece.
I'm talking about 2023 priorities you have in G and H.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, sure.
Those kind of are kind of the same.
So maybe I'll say.
You're right.
Well, Moab Stewart is, is communicating them with before they get to town.
Yeah. So what I'll, what I'll put it is just visitor education, right? And so maybe the subcomponents of that, we include, um, you know, signage and billboards. There's the, there's the kind of the Moab Stewart content. Yeah, I don't, yeah, because I mean, it's, there's part of it, it would be in town as we partner with CNHA and the MEC and we partner with, you know, the businesses, but part of it is that, you know, it's going to be this online unit that anybody can, can reach, whether they're a local or living in Denver or Copenhagen. Right? And then we can use our media buying skills to drive people to get inspired for the area and get educated at the same time, basically.
Would that, could you move that whole N all the way up and replace G where the Moab Stewart is?
Sure. Yeah. How, I do want to ask.
I think it's going to be important this next, this, in the next couple of years is to make sure that once people get into town, they are reeducated.
Correct.
Basically, I mean, I just visited with, I just saw a guy on a side-by-side, no licenses, no nothing. And he happened to be backing out, almost ran over me. And I said, you do realize you're not street legal? And he goes, so no one's pulled me over yet.
There's a.
So.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's.
Wild West, you know, it's on websites and everything.
I wish they would just start pulling them over.
Well, the sheriff selection will not be discussed today. I know, I, I was supposed to be a joke. Anyway, um, so I think I do agree. I guess I wanted to ask on the Moab Ambassador piece of this, which has been kind of discussed. I, like, I'm hesitant to even suggest it without, unless someone really likes this idea and wants to put some energy behind it. Right? This is this idea of having, you know, almost a trail ambassador style person whose role is more like, welcome to Moab, welcome to the community. I can answer any questions you have. Not so trail oriented. You land at the airport and there's someone there hanging out. You know, representing the community. I don't.
I thought, August, when we discussed this at that workshop, it was more than maybe educating or promoting in the businesses.
I thought, yeah.
So somehow making it advantageous for waiters and store clerks and such.
So that, that, that is encompassed in the Moab Stewart program. Within that, there's going to be a business partnership piece in which, you know, basically anybody who interfaces with a visitor, whether in a retail context, restaurant context, or hotel front desk contest is getting, you know, does the online component comes to an in-person training for an hour or two, and there's raffles and prizes and in a social environment. And that's a part of the Moab Stewart program, right? So there is going to be that online piece and then the in-person piece. And that, that was, is not, I, I think that that's captured Moab Stewart. And I kind of think this idea of the Moab Ambassador, I'm not, I'm not confident to throw money behind it because I don't think people, I don't think I know quite what it is, to be honest, unless somebody really likes the idea.
I'd put it at the bottom.
Take it, I would just take it. It sounds like it's the Moab Stewart. It sounds like it's the same thing.
I don't know if I understand really well, but you guys say that to put a person in the, in airport and say, welcome to Moab. That's, I think that's why we have that welcome. So that people can go over there and check it out what's going on in Moab.
Yeah.
So I don't think the person in the airport to do that.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to get rid of it then, unless anybody really disagrees.
Oh, yeah, I agree. It's going to be a tight budget issue. You're going to be asked to cut. I'm just saying.
Okay. So let's cut ahead of time. Great. So visitor education can be really important. I'm just going to bring it up.
You can replace Moab Stewart since you have more.
That sounds good. And then, um, I, let's, I'm just going to say. I think it's probably as straightforward to say digital, digital outreach and education. I guess I'll just say the Moab Stewart program generally, and that'll encompass everything that's kind of under that framework. And then I just want to say, you know, like our, the arches timed entry campaign that we did last spring to try to increase awareness about the reservation system, that's going to be, that's not going to be under Moab Stewart. So, you know, whatever comes out of Arch's next year, there's going to have to be some visitor education done in a similar manner. How much? I think we have to figure out. But I, you know, what other visitor education challenges do you think we're going to face in this upcoming year besides like a timed entry 2.0 or not?
For that campaign will be educational campaign. That's how you call it because that's not a marketing campaign. That's an educational campaign. So that number two could be educational campaign.
Well, this is all educational, right? So, but I mean, like topic, topic focus areas that are as specific as timed entry. I'm, I'm happy to put like timed entry and other visitor friction point education. I don't know, some kind of a catch-all. Is there anything else that people think that we are going to face that will have a similar level of visitor education needs such as timed entry or an equivalent?
Not equivalent, but just the OHV new regs.
Oh, that's a really good point. Okay. I will put that in. Okay. So OHV education. And then, and then I'll do maybe arches timed entry or similar. I think that captures most of the, the main issues.
Do we have any marketing campaign budget for next year?
Yep. So this is where I tried to capture here, you know, there's a demand, I think, for a more steady, constant drip of the marketing, so long as the creative feels like it's on, you know, telling the story that collectively we feel good about telling and that the creative is good, right? And so that's what I tried to capture. Maybe I can reword this a little bit, but maybe more instead of steady, like consistent. strategic marketing. That.
Sorry, maybe the brand planning needs to go above that so that once you have your brand, then you can have your consistent strategic marketing.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'll, I'll just say consistent strategic marketing. I think strategic kind of implying that it's carrying out the vision of the strategic plan.
I think consistent is a good word.
Okay.
You say the brand and the website is going to take a little bit of while. So why branding first?
Why is branding first?
Because you need to come up with the branding so you know what you're going to put on your website.
Everything comes from there. Well, strategies first and then branding's first, second. And then I think that the marketing comes from there. So I think, you know, one of the challenges we've been facing, I think, is like, you know, how do we turn a very large ship and then also move nimbly at the same time and react and act. And I think this fall campaign is a good example of that. Where the creative is, we've tried to kind of read the room and, and put some, some content and creative that feels like it, it does thread that needle appropriately. And we feel good about that. And we're going to continue to do that until we like have that. Okay, here's, here's the next step. We've got the community buy-in. Everyone feels good about it. And, and therefore, and so on, right? Cool. Okay. So how do we feel about this top, like, five? Do those feel pretty solid as the top five before we move on? I would, I would probably move visitor education right under marketing, probably. Does anybody disagree with that? Because I think we're going to start.
Can I, can I mention the travel guides?
Yeah.
Ran some numbers yesterday and we're going to be completely out by either the end of January or mid February.
Okay. So the outdoor rec guides we have until approximately when? Because we just got a new order of the outdoor rec.
Yeah, we got those, we got those through at least the summer.
Okay. So at least, so, so, but I mean, is this a good, is this specific enough? Is this specific enough?
Like we have to start working on that January 2nd.
So should we put, I mean, we can put travel guide reprint. I mean, I think probably above website, I guess I would say.
I think the website is less of a priority.
That's what I'm saying. So in terms of funding travel guides specifically, because the outdoor rec guide we have printed. Okay, so we can put that higher.
Is visitor education, this is a question, part of the travel and outdoor guides? Is that part, is it within that?
That's a really good point.
We worked with the, all the public land agencies for the outdoor.
So that's what I'm saying. So then move, yeah, so move that, move that to visitor education.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we already, I think in terms of continuing to operate our travel guide program in which people request them from our website, there's no operational cost increase besides just continuing to run that program.
What was the way to put everything that we need to spend in those in those bullets right now?
No. So that, I mean, the, the way that I'm going to approach the budget process is taking into this, which I think I want to really concentrate on the highest priority things. And then the, you know, the things like the leads program, for example, paying for postage on, on the machine that sends out the travel guides. You know, that's going to be based off of past year estimates.
Because we don't have no merchandising. Since, since we're going to rebrand, we need new merchandising.
For sure. So.
You don't put over there, you just pass. I mean.
So I mean, we can, we should totally, I, I think anything and everything is up for consideration. I'm planning to put it in some amount in there, no matter what. But in terms of this being the voice of the travel council board specifically, you know, then I, I feel like that's a common sense, you know, we'll, I will put some money in there for that priority. But I think that the, the main thing for me is that this carries some weight beyond our office, right? So this, 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 I think is for, for things like, I think perhaps fam tour budget, Melissa, that's right, put this in, right? So, so that's something that we didn't have budget for last year and it's impacted operations and it's a bit of friction to try to make that happen. So that's where I would ask, you know, I think whereas merchandising is maybe not so controversial, trying to get a fam tour budget is maybe a little bit more. And getting that in this letter, letter would be great. I actually was just going to bring that up.
So are you going to put fam tour as a priority or not?
Well, I'm going to suggest it and see if anybody disagrees, I suppose, right now. So fam tour budget, meaning getting, getting folks in the industry, outside of the industry, in our area, hosting them, exposing them to all of the things that we have to offer as a community, whether it's journalists or otherwise. We don't really aggressively run that program, but we partner very closely with the state. And they often reach out to us. They've gotten some really high qualified, you know, magazine or journal or whatever from the UK or what have you. For example, they do have a big UK cycling magazine that's doing a big Utah piece. And, you know, we want to be able to say, yes, make sure we're in that addition, make sure that we're able to support that effort. And so we didn't, we had zero in our fam tour budget last year. It was a bit of a fight. So I think it should be in this list. I think that would really help us out a lot. Does anybody disagree to putting that in the budget and understand kind of what that entails?
I'm just going to throw out that in, you know, because I'm a little bird sitting here, listening and watching and moving.
Oh, you're totally part of this. Yeah.
But in film world, we do fam tours as well, and it is something that has not. I haven't had the capacity as an office of one to be able to do, but it is exactly the idea of bringing in film people who would be inspired to want to make movies to your location managers and producers and directors and showing them really cool stuff. And that to me links into diversification, which I know film keeps getting thrown off the edge of that for some reason, but I just, yeah, so I know that when you say fam tour budget, you're not thinking film, but I would like to throw that out as a something to think about, note for the future.
Well, we could, under this section, in the film section of T R T, you know, mention certain priorities for funding.
2022, you're saying funding the film commission and up there, you're just saying film. So is that leaving the film funding the film commission out of 23?
Just, no, it just, we just haven't really gotten there yet to flesh out that line item, I guess. But I'll, I'll just mention fam for now, just in there so we can placeholder it for the conversation.
Yeah, there's some big things coming up in film land in 2024. Giant anniversary, 75th of the Moab, 100th of Goulding, the 50th, the Utah Film Commission. And it could be a really nice time to potentially bring, you know, something along those lines in to see that, that so many people.
Yep.
If that's what the county wants, which we still haven't deciphered yet.
We're just not sure.
We're just not sure. Anyway, that's, that was my.
Yep, noted. Okay, so I'm going to keep going down this list.
Increasing that and research capacity. What other things do we need to increase in that and research? We just, we are still in the process of waiting for Ms. Salon to approve our contract with Sartre. What other, do we need more info, more data and research?
No, I, I think that's less talking about. That's basically threading the needle between, you know, the role as I've been, as, as it's been told to me of the, of this board is not to necessarily say you need to hire these people or like overseeing personnel decisions. But for me, you know, just using the word capacity as a, as a overarching, you know, because it could be a contracted out or whatever, but basically you know, having someone who's living in our visitation numbers, who's living in our economic data in a more regular basis is a core part of their functionality so that we can send out and gather, you know, more regular data and insights to the community, right? So sending a weekly newsletter, a monthly newsletter. Just because really there's no one in the team who has the capacity to like do that. I mean, Ben's doing it right now and he's creating like eight grant programs at the same time. So it could be contracted though. It doesn't necessarily have to be staff.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Okay. I was thinking it's more programs, like buying more.
No, if anything, we need to streamline that. Make sure we're using the right ones. I'm going to start nailing into ordering this down here. You know, fam tour budget, I think that I'm, I'm going to put that above website because that's something that we could move with very quickly. And I, I'm, I'm, I almost think website might be a 2024 project, depending on the timing of everything else. Anybody object to putting fam tour, fam tour above website?
But the, the website is redoing.
Yeah, it's basically once, you know, when we have a new, after the brand, after the strategic and brand planning process, I think it'll be clear. You know, what do we want to communicate? How do we want to communicate it? How are we currently communicating that via our website? What, you know, aesthetic changes need to be made, evaluate if we need to do a structural change of the website. Robert's been doing an amazing job. Yeah, discover Moab. Sorry. Yeah, to be clear. So maybe I should be clear about that.
All right. I just, you know, website.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay. So the last time, I mean, Robert, when was the last time that that, that was worked on with, with Relic?
2016, maybe?
And, and, and if you want to get Robert going, ask him about that project. Basically, it was.
But basically, under the hood.
Yeah.
I mean, I love the website. I love working on it, but under the hood, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not a what you see is what you get kind of interface. So basically you have to know how to code it. So I'm the only one in the office who can update it.
Yeah.
You know, that can be a problem when I'm on vacation or something like that. So we want one, if nothing else, that's just easier to use.
Yeah. So I'm going to leave that on there for this year because I think there is a chance we get to that point.
At least the bare bones of it somehow. I mean, if you're starting with a whole platform, then it's, you can figure out if you're going to square or wicks or things or whatever, you know.
Yep. So, and I think that that's going to cost money to do well. So if, if we have to you know, delay and rather than like, let's just put a skin on the pig of the current website, let's do it all top to bottom in one go effectively. But I'll leave it on here for now as a, as a priority. As it, as it pertains to now that we're kind of getting into the bottom here. You know, I think the special event grant is something that we've done for a long time. It seems like a no brainer to make sure that that's relatively high in the priority list. Are people, okay, if I put that maybe below fam tours or.
Yeah, put it above the.
Okay. While we're speaking of grants right now, this is at the bottom, and maybe Ben can speak to his experience administering this program. The Moab grant, I was in its infancy this year and had some stutter steps.
He stepped out for a minute, so maybe you.
Okay, we'll do something else. Yeah, yeah. The special event grant is, it funds events that bring additional visitation to the community on key weekends. So in the past, it's funded the Folk Festival. It has funded the Free Concert Series. This year it's funding the Powwow and a endurance ride, a horse, a horse riding event, basically. I see it as the carrot. If the special event permit process at the moment is the stick. And so, you know, as in across the board, you know, we're more actively managing destination, being able to have both kind of carrots and sticks, I think is really, really useful. And personally. Okay, so the Moab grant is specifically to provide marketing budget to small businesses in the tourism sector. The thought was that if smaller, maybe there's an upstart guide who could use a thousand bucks to put an ad in the paper or what have you, maybe something more sophisticated, that would be, that would be useful to ensure that we have healthy competition and that we're supporting our kind of smaller up, up and coming businesses who can't compete with a larger marketing budget, for example. And so maybe when Ben comes back, he can speak a little bit to that, his thoughts. In terms of this, these kind of start to blend together a little bit. I would, I would argue that if we're able to have you know, someone or some kind of contracted entity who's, who's focused on some communications, then that, then, then specifically speaking to T R T and T R T reporting and turning that from like a spreadsheet that's unintelligible to the average person into you know, a short video or a nicely laid out PDF. I think having someone who'd be able to do that would be really, really useful. And it would also speak to the other rest of the owned media components of what we're working on. So I almost think.
I, J and K to me all seem to sort of be one in the same in a weird way of, I mean, when you're getting with that and research that is about the T R T and communicating that story, it's, I don't, me, it's all, it's like, you know. Yeah, it's the
The whole.
The whole kitten koodle. It's the whole mission pass.
Right. Because in a perfect, in a perfect world, you have someone with all those skills or whatever. Yeah.
Eventually go on to the website.
Yeah, my goal would be that we have, I mean, so we've actually started and again, Ben can speak to this. We have, we, we contracted with a data science company that basically starts with just taking publicly available data about our area and putting it on a platform that we can embed on the website that has like, you know, what is our population and how much money do we make? And what industries do we have? So that it's accessible to all kinds of folks. I mean, it's useful for grant applications for the average person. And then we eventually, once the strategic plan happens, we tie those indicators and we incorporate our internal indicators so that we can track our progress in a public fashion. But so that's, that's kind of in progress. But yeah, it would be, it would be public. We want, you know, my goal is to try to get as much of the data that we have usable by as many people as possible.
Obviously, the website's the interface.
Yep. And, and, you know, we have the, if the Discover Moab website is facing the, the visitor, you know, right now, the county website is what's facing the resident and the community. And that, quite honestly, needs a lot of work for our pages at least. And.
Very hard to navigate.
Yeah. So, um, I, I think I do want to keep the data and research piece separate a little bit, just because I, I see that as, as, as being different skillsets and different contracts in a way. So, I don't know, does this feel like? This feels like a, like an objective that could come out of either of these. You know, people's goals. So I might just take this piece out and recognize that, that these two things are going to be able to drive the outcomes of the other. Does that feel appropriate? Is Ben back? Well, I'll speak to it a little bit. You know, I think, I think it's a good idea. What, what ended up happening, Ben saw, was that I think a lot of people who are looking at any of the grants that were offered, kind of leans towards looking at the star grant just because there was more money on the table. So, you know, we didn't fully allocate that program this year, the, the, the Moab business grant. We, you know, we had about 50 grand in the program and allocated about 37 grand. Ben has some thoughts about how we could improve that. Maybe it's just shrinking the program, making it a little bit more targeted. But we, I mean, we haven't really seen the impacts quite yet. We, we barely funded those, those recipients last month.
Doing it later on would be more beneficial.
How, how do you mean?
Yeah, like doing it like October, November. You know, I think people kind of slowed down a little bit to where, you know, they can start, they're starting to look at their advertising for next year, you know, these little small businesses, you know, where in August and September, even July, everybody's going hot and heavy, you know, and they're super busy. You know, and, and most people, you know, like this time of year, most people are kind of sitting down and kind of doing their end of year stuff and, and looking at what they need to do for next year, working on budgets for next year.
Maybe not at the restaurants.
Maybe not.
But you guys are, you think you're.
Peak season right now.
And every hotel is.
But so what if it was like November?
I would say November, December would be, yeah. And actually, I mean, in August and September is, we're like getting ready to ramp up for our big season of the fall.
Yeah.
It's not till, yeah, after like, well, until November.
But like, maybe like do like November, December.
Yeah.
Because, you know, a lot of the, um, so restaurants are gearing up. You know, like the, uh, a lot of that water-based outdoor companies are hearing down. And yet we're like chasing our tails in September and August, you know, or August and July and stuff. So I think, yeah, if, if so, November, December would, that'd be great too, you know, I mean.
If we had a more coordinated rollout, I mean, part of this is tough timing wise, just because we have, you know, budget is tied, like the goal is that the, the money that is in a particular budget year gets spent in a particular budget year as much as possible. You know, so we launch in January with our new budget, we have a new programming. I mean, but to be fair, you could, we could say like, hey, this year we're not, you know, we don't know if it's going to come out yet, but you know, be prepared. These types of opportunities will be available come January. Meet with the SBDC person and they can get you kind of planned and prepped and I mean, because regardless of whatever program, I think if people are thinking strategically and aware that there's resources available.
I think January, February is a good.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say too. Yeah. What about January, February? I mean.
Yeah, totally. I think this year we're way more, we're way better positioned to launch something like that. Whereas, you know, when we were doing this last year, you know, I was a month into the job and didn't, you know, let alone have established grant programs that we could, you know, launch Ja- January one pending commission approval. But I feel way better about being in a position to do that this year.
You, you could even be rolled out during like the economic summit, you know, or something.
Well, and that would be the goal. Yeah. And, and I've pretty, I think that that's a really good opportunity this year to really get a lot of this launched and, and get buy-in for the strategic planning and, and all of the above.
Ben's back.
We talked so much about such good stuff.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I was, I was on with the bank. I got IP frauded. So I was just trying to figure out.
No.
All right. Sorry.
No, you're good. Um, Ben, there was questions about the Moab grant. Right now it's at the bottom of the pile. Do you want to speak to, so the, the marketing, our awesome businesses grants at the bottom of the pile at the moment in terms of priority? What? What do you think? What's your take on the program and generally its success and, and like, is that something that we should continue into the next year? And if so, with what kind of modifications?
I think the program was a success in that we did it. Um, I think in a lot of ways it was a bit of a failure. You know, I think that we just didn't get the word out well enough. On that grant, it was launched alongside another grant that had like 10 times the amount of money. And so folks just weren't as interested in as they should have been. But overall, I think it's a really good idea. I, I think it needs to be improved and I think that it's either worth investing in if we want to increase the amount of funding. Or otherwise just divert our funds to all these other grants that we're doing and not worry about it. But I think if we were to do a, a marketing focus grant, I think that'd be a large benefit to the community. But I think it would help if we increased, uh, the, the amount of, the, not just the amount of awards, but the, the, the size of an award that a business could receive. Cause I think $5,000, you know, I think it's attracted some businesses, but we just didn't get enough businesses in. I mean, everyone got a grant because we were under by $20,000. So. Yeah, that's true. One person didn't. So seven of eight applications were awarded. We were like $25,000 under budget. So yeah, I, I, I think it's promising and I think that it's actually something that would really benefit a good workshop with this body in the new year to figure out how we can make that grant a lot more effective. But if we're just deciding right now on priorities based on its current structure, I, I'm, I'm not married to it. It was, it was just okay.
Well, that sounds like it should be at the bottom of the pile. It, it was, it was a good program and might not get a ton of funding, but that it's not the highest priority for next year.
I mean.
Anybody dissent? Uh, Kaylin, you unmuted a second ago. I don't know if you had something to add there.
It's a little bit off topic. I was just wondering if any of these categories encompass, especially data and research encompass better short-term rental, uh, tracking and management.
Yeah, really good point. So, um, we've been kind of going back and forth between working with a new contractor to, to provide that. Um, and, um, so it's, it's kind of, it's being prioritized, but I think that, um, that could be put into here as a, an additional, just ensure that that ends up getting funded. So I'd be happy to add that specifically. If that feels good. Where, where do you think that, where would you propose to kind of put that in the list of priorities?
I'm not sure if it would be a sub point to data and researcher, if it might just be its own. But I think it might play well with the county commission.
Okay. I will put. Okay, it's on there. Any, anything else? That we feel like should be in this list?
I think it's looking pretty good.
Okay, we'll come back to it before we finalize. We got, we still have kind of two other sections to look at. So, so let's jump up here to rec film production and conventions. Expenditures here. Actually, before we do that really quickly, let's, let's, let's check out, um, the TRCCA funding bucket. The, what was brought up before was kind of an ask to get in, in, increased kind of meeting tech and, and sound acoustic support at the Grand Center. To, you know, increase its ability to host various kinds of outreach, community event, conference style things. Do people still feel like that should be prioritized?
After, after having the meeting there, yes.
Okay.
I'd love to check with the, um, Star Hall people because the Film Commission many years ago donated a really nice projector, soundboard and things. And I just don't know where, I mean, I had a really, really good event on Friday and it's. Well, but I'd love for someone to check with them and just be like, are you up to date? Just do, what do you need? We, there's still no wifi in there. There's no hotspot in there and a lot of the stuff that is coming from other places, it's digital and not just in my event, but in many of the others. So to me that is a, you know, if we're going to talk about events at Star Hall, which is a county thing, then to me that's a priority personally.
I mean, that, that seems appropriate to me to add as a second line here.
They, what would you say that? Update, update Star Hall. Support improved tech, yeah, at Star Hall. And I, I don't, yeah, I'm just gonna say I don't know. That's an internal thing. I don't know what you guys are doing with the stage and stuff, but there's very often requests for external PA systems for events that are outdoors and things like that. So I don't know that's a this.
Well, this is typically, uh, like, uh, centralized focused for a particular, um, venue. So, so the way that the, the funding is written and everything. So like this supports the Grand Center and Osta primarily, right? So I don't think we could do like a decentralized technology asset like a PA system out of this. Okay, I'm, uh, just, I will be taking the 2022 priorities before we finalize this. This is just for reference for now. Okay, let's go up here to recreation filming conventions. We put here salaries and overhead for the Grand County Active Trails and Transportation Department.
Can you add in the film department to there as far as salaries?
Yep. Do we want to, uh, do, is there any reason we shouldn't break out? No, you're right. I think that that makes sense. Um, so let's, let's talk about film, um, in terms of what within the context of this, um, letter here. You know, we can, again, prioritize. So we've got the community event grant, we've got film, this responsible recreation program. I think we can call out in terms of the material costs that are not related to, to salary. Love our trails is on there. I, I would think I'd want to put film as like number two here. Underneath the salaries and overhead for G cap. Does that feel?
Feels good to me. I've been personally, I wasn't part of any of these prior. That's why I saw the agenda today and snuck myself in here because I was I like to, yeah, when that word comes up, it suddenly. Yeah, I don't know how you discussed it, but I'm happy to, yes, it moves up to number two for sure.
So I, so I guess I want to, I'm trying to just come up with that phrase. So this is, if this is coloring, covering salaries and overhead for the Film Commission. Um, and that's kind of captured here in part A. You know, I would want to think through, you know, what, what other support or, or however the county what is going to spend its film funds.
Could be the fan tour stuff.
Yeah. I mean, I would think that's, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're totally right. So, non-salary.
I mean, I was just at an event, you know, the Association of Film Commissioners International Cineposium, where film commissioners from across, across the globe get together and meet and talk and have panels and interesting people that come in and location directors and producers and directors and all kinds of people. And it is, it is something that I thought that maybe Moab would, as the longest running film commission in the world where it all started, might want to host something like that. A bid for something like that, I think starts at $50,000. But when there's money coming in left, right and center for a lot of the films that I've helped facilitate coming here, it feels like it could be like, uh, you know, that's, we're talking about TRT, right? I mean, I, obviously that might not be a priority for everyone. So we don't have to have it on this list, but I'd love to have a discussion and yeah, I'm sort of looking at this list and trying to figure out what you're trying to do with it anyway.
Yeah. Well, why don't we, why don't we just clear up the hierarchy a little bit here and then we can kind of, uh, drill, drill deeper. So I think I, I, again, I'd also pull up the kind of the responsible recreation program, which is basically under GCAP. And so that'll represent everything that's not salary, more or less. Yeah. Otherwise, in terms of general, this looks good to me, community event grant being slightly above the art trails in terms of priority. Okay. Is, is there any, um, I think what would be, I think here is just, um, if we're looking at this, like what, what specific components, what other kinds of programs or support to film, I think in the industry locally besides funding the Film Commission? Or any particular callouts within the Film Commission's, um, budget that we'd want to highlight? Is there anything that comes to mind for folks? I'm sure a lot of things come up for B. I mean, is, is there anything that, that you'd want to, to pose? For consideration?
Merchandising.
Do I have a budget for merchandising? My, my, I have a budget in its entirety. I can let August speak to what's been prioritized or where. I think it's still all one line. Nothing's been actually.
It hasn't been itemized.
It's not been itemized still. And yeah, October. So yes, merchandising is a huge part of it. I mean, most of what I do, most of the marketing that I do is through giving out merchandise to these film.
Travel expenses.
Travel expenses for sure.
And so I think.
If the idea is to help, is to inspire people to want to come and make movies here, then a lot of that is going to mean me needing to not be here in order to do that, which I have done in the past. So travel, yes. And then potentially again, for me, it's having somebody on the ground when I can't wait. Having another me as.
I mean, that would be a big priority, I think. So I would say probably number one there is, is a, you know, an admin support type role. Right?
Yeah, August, I think another thing to add in there too, particularly for Bega's benefit is like an updating of the resource guide. You know, so I mean, she's so busy all the time that if it was on the website and it was updated and people knew who to contact and, you know, what are the land areas that they can fill that? Who are the resources legally to help with catering or electrical or plumbing, stuff like that? I think that would be hugely helpful too, but you know, because only one person, so she needs somebody or she needs an admin to help update that alone. But I think just here at the lodge, what we see a lot is people that like, can you get in touch with Viga? We have a question about, you know, ABC. And she's out on a, you know, a site and oftentimes outside of cell range. And something that we could refer people to would be hugely, um, supportive of her efforts.
And thank you, Brian. Yes. And I do, I have a resource guide on my website and I have a very pretty website that I've been, spent a lot of time on, but it does, it's going to take actually someone like an admin sitting down and literally calling everyone on there because people are supposed to be updating those resources of themselves, themselves. And also businesses as well as, I, I mean, I just put a post up the other day for locations, any business in this town or in this county can list their property. It's just about sending the pictures and me updating the pictures. And you know what I mean? There's, it's just, it's literally just, yeah, I don't.
Does, does updated resource guide, is that the right language?
Uh, update, well, updated, updated website in general because, but what, but what Brian is speaking about is updated production resource directory. Yes.
Cool.
And then, yeah, for me it's update and continuing to update the locations database.
Well, and I think that's increased administrative.
Administrative, correct. Yeah.
So.
A lot of my own, you know, and I'm doing a lot of my own, uh, logo design, merch design.
Right.
You know, like the art, they add art direction and stuff too.
Yep. Does this, does this feel like this captures maybe like additional support that maybe is not currently being funded? I think that would be, that would be my priority is like, what are these, what are the priority things that we're not currently seeing?
Yeah, right now I'll have to look it again with not my brain on while you're showing.
That sounds good to me. Okay. I'm going to maybe take out trail ambassadors because it's like this will capture everything, including trail ambassadors. I don't think we need to itemize that particular section. Does this feel good to folks? Can we move on?
That looks good.
Okay. So what I'm going to do then is I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I'm going to populate this section basically with what the Economic Development Board came up with. So give me one second. All right. And we are at the, the 20 minute warning here, just for reference. We will be done by five. So we have over here salaries and overhead for the Economic Development Department. I guess I would say for economic diversification activities. I'm going to pull strategic planning up one level here because I think that is the most important. We've got this, this note here, which is kind of paralleling what's in the other section, the additional staff capacity with the focus on data slash research content slash storytelling and program development. So program development is additional, that's not going to necessarily be overlapping. And that's basically a vista or something similar to that, that would work with Ben to kind of augment his work on all of the grants and the other programs that we're building out. So that we have a little bit more capacity to do that work and Ben's not running around with his head chopped off all the time. There's a lot in here. I think we could maybe tighten up the prioritization personally. There's the, is kind of a catchall implementation of strategic planning recommendations. And I think that's before we had all of these things listed out. I think I'll maybe come back to that. Star Grant, you know, I think is, is the biggest thing we've done this year. We will be announcing and hopefully awarding the first round of those grants at next Tuesday's commission meeting. So continuing to fund that program is going to be, I think, really important as we clarify what maybe some of the project level goals are going to be that come out of strategic planning. The match for the Royal County Grant Program, funding the partnership between USU's SBDC and Grand County. So funding basically that Business Resource Center position to be full time, adequately compensated and highly functional is going to continue, would be the recommendation to fund out of this. Workforce development was prioritized. So an apprenticeship program with on the job training, workforce opportunity and needs analysis, really figuring out what are the needs locally and how can we train our locals to meet those? There is this kind of catchall notion for education support. Just this idea that how can we be more engaged with driving, getting kids to get associates while they're in high school, getting them to kind of plug into the USU C T E program, et cetera, et cetera. Business development focus, so ensuring that we have some kind of an entrepreneurial program, general business mentorship and general basic business education programming that would be implemented by this SBDC partner. And I think this is a big focus that I think will come out of the strategic planning recommendations in terms of details. But this idea of like a commercial space development, you know, some kind of an incubator with a commercial kitchen, make your, make your space so that we can actually have affordable commercial to build out some of these visions and to get folks growing new opportunities. Any questions or comments on this kind of list or order? You know, the Economic Development Board kind of put this together, but the, you know, this body as well within there, right? To kind of shift it around.
Chris, can you just scroll up to the top of this section?
Can you see, do you want to see the numbers here? I mean, I, I would maybe take this out just because it doesn't actually help anyone do any budgeting. I mean, I, I put it in there two weeks ago because I wasn't sure, you know, having some kind of a pot to pull from once the strategic planning is done, I think. But that'll probably just happen at the next year's budget process where we have a much clearer roadmap for, for 2024 and beyond. And we just keep chugging along with these subprograms in the meantime.
Then the letter C is the same, it will be the same person for the travel council too.
So I think that the story here is that there's going to be cross functionality for folks who have that content storytelling and data research focus. You know, the same way that it's going to be useful to be able to produce, produce a spotlight on a local business on the tourism or the non-tourism side, we're going to need that same person. The, the getting economic development jobs data is going to take the same skill set as pulling visitation data.
That person 50 50.
Or whatever, but, but basically saying that there's, there's, there's reason to fund both out of either, if that makes sense. This is much higher up in the priority compared to the other side, which makes me think should, should a, I think this actually captures the, the spirit of what the ones below are trying to get to more accurately perhaps. And so maybe replace what's on the other section with this language and maybe move it up slightly in the tourism section. Thoughts on that? Maybe I can show you what I'm thinking. If you can reject it, if not.
Yeah, go down to the tourism part. Where's it at?
Okay, so. Yeah. So right now it's fairly low down on the list. It's basically this section. So what I would propose is basically replacing that with this, pulling out program development because that's not going to be a focus for this side of the funding. And I'll just get rid of staff. This is justified and I don't like that. Sorry. But yeah, I would basically be replacing this section. I think that's fair enough. But, you know, just should, could this go higher on this side, I guess?
I don't know. I think everything above it is, is more important.
Okay.
I think it's right, it's right in the right location on this section.
Well, I would agree until, until there's a money amount next year, one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it could go above the, the website overhaul.
Okay.
Yeah, it could go above website overhaul.
Okay, I feel good about that.
What couldn't you put?
I'm just rewriting this so it makes more sense to me.
I feel like the website goes hand in hand with consistent and strategic marketing because your consistent strategic marketing is directing people to the website.
Yeah. So I guess what I would say.
The website, if you're directing people there. Yeah, yeah.
So could you do underneath D, can you make a sub thing and put the discover moab.com overhaul under D? And make it a subcategory.
Well, it's going to be a different vendor though, I would imagine. In terms of, okay, we've done this brand planning and now we have a website specialist who's, because I think there's a difference between making sure that our website like comports with what our marketing strategy is and doing a intensive backend overhaul of the whole thing. And I think that's what this is speaking to. We're going to keep maintaining the website with, with not a big capital cost. Unless, Robert, I'm missing something. Does, is the website for now functioning effectively so long as you're able to be there in the background?
Depending on what the new branding is, you know, we can certainly update it.
Right. And then do the overhaul in the future.
Major overhaul afterwards.
Yeah, that's where I'm landing, I think personally. So with that in mind, I'm going to take this language, this language cap, capture that kind of what I was speaking to for additional department capacity to execute data research and content storytelling projects. I'm going to bring that back up here. So it's just the same.
Under both.
Yep. Except for this has, has.
Yeah, this is a bigger part.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I, I think education support and workforce development, I mean, at least again, in my world, always just talk about me because you know, that's how I go do. It's just so important. And here and rural Utah and kids and students and things. And every project that I try to bring in, I want people involved and learning and seeing that there's these industries. I just think education and workforce development is to me a higher priority than, than certain grants, let's say.
So I, I would say that in, I mean, in terms of funding this year, if we're talking about dollar amounts, right? Star Grant got the most and workforce development was a priority, but we basically didn't have the capacity to build those programs out. So I think that in some ways, you know, we could put that above the star grant or just below the star grant to kind of indicate that these are the main focuses. Star Grant. So that's, that's kind of the, I would call it the, the spearhead of the diversification campaign, right? So we, we basically worked out a general relatively fluid, but, but, you know, somewhat targeted description of what economic diversification is and asked people to submit projects that would further the county's mission. Rather than saying, we want to specifically, you know, fund machine shop expansions or or something of that nature. So kind of put it into the, into the hands of our local passionate entrepreneurial folks. That's what that was. And so that ended up, we pulled about that $500,000 was funded and then another half a million was pulled from reserves. So that'll be a little over a million dollar program this year. And I'm really excited about it, as has been, I hope. Once we get through the administrative piece.
I agree with Viga to move that up a little, either, either right above Star Grant or right below.
Which one? Education support, workforce development?
Workforce development.
Okay. How do we feel above or below?
I think the start grant has excited, you know, it's make people feel like the tax money is going to help. But it's already been put out in the world as an existing thing. It's not, it's already been, it was already prioritized and done. It still has to be budgeted. Right. No, no, I agree. I'm just saying it's not, it's not a total unknown. People are aware of its existence at this point.
Right. I, I do think that the ultimate lead, the star grant probably will, well, I don't know, it's up to you. Should basically, you know, if we had a million dollars, which we do, should that start grant receive more money than like workforce development or education support? Or should we drive more money towards workforce development and education support in this next year? I think that's the point of this whole exercise.
Personally, I would say more towards workforce development.
Okay, let's do it. What about education support? I mean, it's pretty vague, but.
Kind of goes along with workforce, workforce development. It's sort of number three in workforce development to me. It's not even a thing.
So maybe, maybe higher education access or something? Does that, does that capture the spirit?
I liked your other.
I like education support because they don't need to, it's not, it doesn't have to be a college education. Yeah, I'm talking about high school too. Yeah, in my world.
When people had a.
Tech schools, everything.
How to cook.
From USU that they felt like a lot of the people pre use and real education on how to do their budget and their finances and their projections.
But even like cooks, I mean, like actual on the like training. Here's, here's an industrial kitchen where we can teach you how to use a knife properly and blah, blah, blah. And here's a, you know, film people coming in and teaching you how, like it's, it's all towards future development of keeping these kids in this town and making them inspired and want to.
Yep.
Hey, everybody wants, that's how I see it personally, but I don't know if that's.
That's how I see it.
It's like.
Both.
It's both. It's all.
It's all. It's giving people that are in businesses more skills and then it's helping train people to build positions.
But in a really cool way, hopefully, so that it's, yeah.
So to keep, to keep us moving, I think we're really close on this. I want to make sure that this prioritization feels good and then we're basically done. We will review and then approve.
I like to look up a lot better now.
Okay.
One sec. Yes, the SBDC partnership, I think it covered business development because when what Ben, Ben, he was over there, he was doing all those things. She was doing entrepreneur program, business mentorship and basic business education. So I think, yes, delete the business development.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just capture it as the USU Moab SBDC Director as a particular call out. Because they would, they would help to execute this program, but there's potentially additional funding that would need to go to curriculum development or additional partners to provide those sources that they would manage. In terms.
But sorry, is this all, are those, is business development and all those are in relation to what your, your definition of diversification is? Is that what we're, it's all on?
Well, I think that, that raises an interesting question. Economic diversification as defined by statute is fairly open. So I think that no matter what these programs are going to be appropriately funded out of this particular pot of T R T, they could be supported by like Royal County Grant Funds or other resources out there. And I think that whatever comes out of our strategic planning process is going to refine exactly, you know, what the goals of, you know, these are more specifically. But I, but I, but I mean, I think that funding the SBDC Director, that person, there's not going to be a mandate that says, oh, you can't support, you know, like the accounting or like help someone do the books if they're running a guide service. I think that would be perfectly, there's, there's nothing that would like restrict. Once the, once the programs have been created, these kinds of educational support, I don't think they'd be restricted in some way. I think the more targeted programs when we're doing like grant development or commercial space development, I think that would have to be targeted based off of the goals of economic diversification as prescribed by a strategic plan. The only one that seems a little out of whack compared to the other section, like this additional department capacity to execute data research content storytelling and very development is much higher in this list than the other one. Does that feel right to people?
You could put it underneath all the workforce development, business development.
Okay. Yeah, maybe right here. And then commercial space development, although really awesome, I don't think that realistically we're going to have enough capital to execute that next year. And I think that's almost like a placeholder for the future.
No, you could, even if it was a little bit, if this is something you see as a real, we want to see in the future, even putting $1,000 in a line item that stays there and every year we build on it. Is.
Yeah.
Because if you don't put a little bit of money towards what you want, it always votes, we saw that with USU.
So with that in mind, does this, this is the priority list as it, as it reads. Does that feel good or should anything go up or down at this point?
I think it looks good.
I think it looks good.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to just quickly run through here.
You do need, oh, you did change it. Nevermind.
Yep. And then this should say October 12th. We didn't actually vote on anything at the last meeting, so I'm actually just going to pull this out. We will edit this after the fact. Let me just read through this and make sure I didn't miss anything. I'm going to pull out the 2022 priorities. I'll get this correct number at a later date. Um, otherwise, I think this is ready for a vote.
I would like to make a motion that we have. Oh, wait, go ahead.
I don't think, I think we lost our.
We lost, lost your quorum.
Lost our quorum.
Oh, who left?
There's one, two, three and Brian, that's four.
And we do have Jenny, Jenny has arrived on.
Oh, Jenny just got on, I think of her.
Oh, wait, wait, join us, Jenny.
Yeah.
We're just about to stop.
The final countdown.
All right, we, one, one till five. I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve. The list of budget priorities for expenditure in accordance with the transit room tax and tourism recreation culture convention, airport tax, facilities tax. To send to the county commission.
Okay, we've got a, uh, motion by Sharon, a second by Jason, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? No. Uh, as we have reached the end of our agenda, well, yeah, yeah, Sharon.
Will you, when you get this finalized with our names in there and everything, will you, will you email it out to us, please?
Yep, what I'll do is I'll get Jenny's signature on here. Um, and then when I send it to the commission, I'll make sure y'all are CC'd so you have a final version.
Thank you.
Um, we've reached the end of our agenda today, um, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for your continued. Support of this board and all of the operations that we're trying to have happen. Thanks for the time. Have a good afternoon.
Yeah, thanks for.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here.